We'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Boyd, if you could establish role call, please.
Counselor Oaf.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Roden.
Here.
Mithaller. Absent. Ellis.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
We have a quorum here.
Okay, tonight's invocation is going to be given by Counselor Thomas and the pledge of allegiance by Sean Ellis.
Father, we're once again thankful for the opportunity to come here and discuss our city business this evening. Father, we pray for any decisions that we need to make tonight, that we be guided by your wisdom, Lord, in that you would just give safety travels when we go home this evening, pray for this through Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of the agenda?
No, 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 I make a motion that we amend the agenda.
Apparently Sean did not get the message.
My friends don't tell me nothing.
I would like to make a motion that we change item thirteen D from temporary to permanent. And then I would also like to add thirteen E to have a discussion and a resolution about the airport property.
Okay.
And then I would also like to add a thirteen F for commissioner appointments, because we have a couple that I understand are redo.
So is that your motion?
That is my motion.
We got a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, ayes have it. All right, introduction of special guests. It's our same old same old out there. Fantastic. Special order of business, we do have something this month. As you all know, I had brought up to your, or brought to y'all's attention last month, Ms. Crystal Lacy had volunteered to serve in my vacancy on city council. Work tickled to death that she has decided to do that and look forward to this. With that said, I really need a motion to proceed with this. Got a motion from Sean, second from Steve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, Crystal, if you would, come on up. We're gonna go ahead and get you started off the right way. We're gonna swear you in and you can take your position.
Oh, she's got it.
Thank goodness, because I don't know what to say. On up, Crystal. All right, this is your office, if you would please, raise your right hand. See mistake, we'll fix this later. I, Crystal Lacy, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Crystal Lacy, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And I will discharge the duties of alderman.
And I will discharge the duties of alderman.
Of the city of Huntsville.
Of the city of Huntsville.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
At a work. Crystal, come on up, you can have a seat right here.
Just set it with your stuff.
We'll fix the typo.
All right, congratulations, Crystal. All right, with that out of the way, approval of the minutes from the meeting November the thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three?
Make a motion to be approved as disseminated.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Everybody's on a laughing gas tonight, apparently. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I'm not gonna get scolded twice.
Okay, public comments section. We have any public comments from our guests out there? Hearing none, we'll move on to city department reports, which they were provided, some of these were provided in an email packet. They were all provided in an email, in your, emailed to you with the agenda packet. Let's start with Chief Thomas, what you got for us?
Business as usual. We're really happy with our cases open and closed. Those are holding really balanced for the year. This time of year, we're obviously step up patrol for theft and so on and so forth. But we have this train coming up this week. And I did also, it was a little late in the packet and I'm working on getting it in the format where I can email to you guys, but the SRO reports there, there was eighty-nine contacts, if you will. There has been a lot of Grinch spottings around town, I don't know if guys have seen that on Facebook. It seems to be a pretty big hit with the kids, so.
I love it.
There's an event coming up, I believe Friday, that will kind of wrap it up for the year, I'm thinking so, but anyway. That's about it.
On the Grinch, just so you know, two hundred and seventy-nine pictures taken as I played the role. And every one of those kids said something about the Grinch. I think it is a big success. Kudos to you all for doing that. As you noticed, Scott's not available tonight, he had some, our personal engagements he had to take care of, so he asked me to kind of give y'all an overview. Obviously, we're still with the lights. We've had a few snafus here and there. Might have to look at, at some point in time, upgrading some of the lights that we've got. But they've been working diligently on that. We've taken a tile up to the airport, we've got a little bit of a drainage issue up there, so Scott and his guys have delivered that. And I am pleased to announce that the paving was completed for eighty-three thousand and ten dollars, exactly on budget as to what we had anticipated on Eda Street Pump Station and Lakeview Drive. So getting progress going in our direction, so. Sean, you got anything for the water department?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So the first one's an update on the tank construction, we are almost complete, but unfortunately, I don't think we'll have it up and running by the end of the year. All of the parts were, that were delayed have arrived, we still have the station itself to install and then some electrical work. They're telling me they think it'll be finished by the holidays, but realistically, I think we're looking at mid-January. And then on the wastewater plant, we have received proposals from two separate contractors to do the project. The first one's Van Horn Construction out of Russellville, and we've worked with them before, they actually completed our two thousand and seven upgrade, and we were really happy with their performance. The other group is a combination of Crossland Heavy Construction and JL Bryson. We have never worked with Crossland, but JL's regularly been a help to us at the plant. So whichever group the commission chooses, I think we'll have a good contractor for the project moving forward. And then my last item was just to mention that I forgot to get with Katie, and Sumner Brashir's term is set to expire at the end of the year. And then I'd like you guys to accept the commission's recommendation to reappoint him for another term. Any questions?
Thank you, Sean. All right, Chief Sheen, what you got for us at the fire department?
A couple of things, one, we are moving forward on some of the problem houses we've talked about, Chief Thomas on, trying to get everything ready for you for the first year, whenever you're ready to move on those. We were, one of the things we've been trying to do is replenish our air packs. We've been, we've been short a few air packs, air packs are now, new air packs are costing a little bit over nine thousand apiece, which obviously has, has put a dent in us getting some of those. But Washington County replaced all their packs, so there was a big surplus out there. And so we've had an opportunity to get two replenished, refurbished air packs, which now has us a full complement. Every riding seat now has an air pack and we have a spare, so when they go down, we have one ready for it. So that was a big advancement for us, and we're proud of that. The other one, as I included in there, is we have checked off seven more of our probie firefighters, which means that they are now checked off and good to go. So when we have calls, they can, they don't have to stand back with me and watch things, they get to actually get in and do some stuff. So we're excited about that. One thing to point out, and that's why I put in there, some different people talk about this, but the experience level on our department, you know, we, I think we're now, in the last six years, I've had eighty-four people on our roster, and we've got twenty-four right now. They come and they go based upon their jobs, their family situations, and those kind of things. The crew we've got right now is a really good crew, and I'm hoping to hang on to them for longer than some of these have been in the past. But still getting them the experience between them, the young guys out at Smyrna have been doing a really good job coming in and training with it, but you know, bless their hearts, they've got less than six months' experience. So they're, they're working hard at it, that helps us, you know, when we have a response on a fire, they want to depend upon the automatic aid and mutual aid departments to come into us, and that has really become very thin. And so we're hoping that the Smyrna folks will continue to grow and continue to be able there to kind of respond with us. Other than that, again, we're still kind of weak on getting responses around us. If we keep these guys with us, we should be in fairly good shape for the foreseeable future. That's it, any questions?
Thank you. Finance Director, what you got, Katie?
I don't have anything to add, other than just winding up for the year and trying to get expenses paid before the end of the calendar year, preparing for next year. Any questions of me regarding the budget or financial report?
Good job, Katie. Which you were providing to us as far as the building inspector report. Economic Development Director, what do you got for us?
Yeah, just, just an update, in my report, I indicated that we had AEDI join us at our meeting and they were going to get us a survey. We've been working with them to edit and refine that survey that will be going out in our strategic planning process. And then we just completed our promotional videos, and I wanted to share our thirty-second visit Huntsville video with the council tonight.
Fantastic. Great video.
Ernie McCoy is, has relocated to our area and lives in the Kingston area. He's been doing several different video projects with different businesses around town. And he was recommended by Jared Rogers on our commission, so we were happy to work with him.
I love the video, that's fantastic. All right, you've been included with your agenda packet, animal control report, animal control officer report. Now on to the mayor's report. Just a couple of announcements here. We were, it was my pleasure to receive the other day, another grant, another TAP grant for sidewalk proposals on Harris and Parrot Street, which is to the tune of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, huge for us. Over, since two thousand fifteen, just some quick numbers on our doc, on the, on the TAP grant. We have received since two thousand fifteen, that we had a dry period there for about six years, but now it looks like, hopefully, we're on track, maybe getting these things every other year. But we have received eight hundred and thirty thousand total in an eight-year period of time, which is fantastic. I've looked back and, and the reports that they gave us from this TAP grant deal was a little bit shocking in our little neck of the woods here, which we're gonna go over in the reward districting here in a little bit, how people are starting to set up and take notice of Huntsville in the fact that we are growing at an expounding rate like none other in the state of Arkansas. So that's a good thing that they're, they're kind of taking notice of these things. And just, just to kind of go over that, we, twenty-three, we got two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, twenty-one, we got two hundred thousand for Main Street and Lee. And in fifteen, which was completed in eighteen, we had that three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar grant for college, which puts sidewalks on both sides of College Street going out toward Butterball. So that just tells you that we're living right, I guess, that we've got eight hundred and thirty thousand over the last eight years. We're, we're, tomorrow morning at ten thirty, we're gonna kick off our Huntsville Strategic Planning Steering Committee meeting. This is our first preliminary meeting with them. This is through, oh, got it here, AEDI, I can never remember the initials. Arkansas Economic Development Institute, along with UALR, the people, they reside there at UALR. This is a very in-depth thing, it's gonna take about eight to nine months to complete. And that starts at ten thirty tomorrow at the RVS Annex, and we've got our ten committee members. And underneath that, we'll be adding other committee members and, and kind of just kicking this thing off, kicking this thing off tomorrow. The, the great thing about it is, as far as the strategic, strategic plan goes, we are engaging our citizens in, in what we're, what we're asking for. The survey that Brandy had mentioned to you all, I implore each of you as council members, go in, take that survey. They're gonna be a little bit lengthy, the surveys will, but it's gonna put together a comprehensive game plan for three years, five years, ten years, so on and so forth. So it's the direction that, that we want our city to go over the next twenty years. So make sure, and all, all you in the audience, make sure that whenever we roll this thing out, there'll be an advertisement of such, either on our Facebook page or what have you. Make sure you go and participate in that survey, because that means the, the difference in, in what we're gonna do over the next twenty years. So very important there. Included, or I had Katie include in your council agendas and your packets was our Vision Zero Initiative, NWARP, that was, if you remember earlier on in the year, we talked about the Safer Streets for All. Passed a resolution at that point in time to try to get, try to get it to where we have no deaths in our community by two thousand and thirty. Since then, we were collectively part of another comprehensive plan for the whole region. And since we have very specific needs in our community, that's why I want you all to go over it with a fine-tooth comb as council members, get with your constituents and talk to them about what they feel. This, this is just input that we've got from the police department, fire department, EMS, ourselves, where some of our problem areas are, so go over it with your constituents, it may, may change the avenues. We're just wanting to make sure, since we now have our own comprehensive plan for the initiative, hopefully in January, whenever we revisit this, we will be able to pass an ordinance that, that specifically views and utilizes our very own initiative with this. This is a big, big deal, guys, this is lots of federal money out there for us to help with this. And, and so I want you all, if you all would, please go over it as much as you possibly can. There's a picture of it up here on the board. This is basically the final draft that they presented, and they wanted us to kind of go over it and get back with them. So we've got until January to do that, so if you would, just kind of go over that. We passed our airport inspection, we had got to, got to ask a lot of questions of Richard Mills, which is state airport engineer, and Jerry Chisholm, which is the director. We had an audience with them, we talked about a lot of different grants and things that we could be doing. Yeah, and you know what, I had this idea of grandeur to change that airport into something that we, we actually utilize in, in all this, and that's gonna take a lot of work on our part. And in two thousand and twenty-four, we plan on bringing you some of those ideas and, and what the game plan is in regards to that. Shane Mattson, that owns the, if you remember, he's the gentleman that leased the Basham Building from us for a while. He owns the bank building right next door, he had called and, and had mentioned to us that it was for sale. And he had reduced the price of that building substantially. Now with that said, I just didn't feel as much as we're trying to put into the Basham, you know, it's, it's kind of one piece at a time for these old buildings, because they require such remediation whenever we, whenever we get into it. So I have actually turned him on to. Wes May, yes, I drew a blank, thank you. Over at, he's the one that started the summit event, you remember, he came and done the proposal with the climbing wall and a place for like tutoring and, and things of that nature for after, after-school program for the kids. This, this building is perfect for that, so hopefully we can facilitate that, put them two together, because I know Wes has got a lot of backing with that, or, or he's communicated as such anyway. So hopefully that'll go off like gangbusters over there, and we can finally have a tenant in that building that would, would be able to establish something in there for our kids after school. Jennifer Bernard, US Department of Agriculture, Rural Development, we're having an event at noon tomorrow. If anybody knows any seniors that they'd like to take part in this. I had met them at a North Arkansas Economic Development Meeting over in Harrison. This is a dynamic group with the USDA, that they offer some form of grants for private citizens as well as low-interest-bearing loans for senior citizens that may be on a fixed income or may need something done in the community, this parlay's right in with, with everything that we're trying to do to clean up our town as well. So we're gonna introduce them tomorrow, and, and they're gonna be speaking to the seniors over at the senior center. So anybody in the audience, if you've got anybody that you know that's on potentially a fixed income, could use some help, make sure that they attend this meeting, please, that's very important. I think that's it on the mayor's report, and then we'll get down into the weeds on the rest of it when we cross that bridge, so. All right, you were emailed with your agenda packet, the Water and Sewer Commission meeting from November the sixteenth, Planning Commission meeting from September the twenty-fifth and November twenty-seventh. Economic Development and Terrorism Commission meeting was November the twenty-first, and you were supplied that. Now on to unfinished business. An ordinance fixing water and sewer rates proposed twenty twenty-three dash seven, are we prepared to put that on its third reading?
Move we put it on its third read by title only.
Got a motion, got a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ayes have it, Jessica, if you would.
Okay, ordinance number proposed twenty twenty-three dash seven, an ordinance fixing rates for water and sewer services rendered by the water and sewer system of the city of Huntsville.
Okay.
Move we approve the ordinance, now a second.
Got a motion to approve, got a second by Roger? All those in favor say aye.
With the role call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Role call vote, my apologies.
Counselor Oaf.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Roden.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Lacy.
Sorry, Lacy.
Yes.
Miss Lacy, sorry. Yes, all right. Seven to zero.
All right. Okay, up next is ordinance amending zoning code for the airport zone proposed twenty twenty-three dash eight.
Move we put this ordinance on its third read by title only.
Got a motion, got a second by Sean, correct?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ayes have it, Jessica, if you would.
Okay, ordinance number proposed twenty twenty-three dash eight, an ordinance adding airport district to the zoning code of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas.
Do I have a?
Make a motion that we approve the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion by Guy, and a second by Roger? Role call?
Counselor Oaf.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Roden.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Lacy.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay. All right, on to new business. Let's start off there with A, under our agenda, two thousand and twenty-four budget. And I, I have to say, before we start this, I want to tell you four council members how enjoyable it was, all you all that were on our budget, there was never argument, never, not that we didn't need, obviously some disagreements in how we think about things, but the professionalism and insight that you all provided us with in preparing this budget was fantastic. So I want to thank Counselor Ford, Counselor Evans, Counselor Roden, and Counselor Ellis for that. Thank you guys very much for your service. Now we're gonna just open it up for discussion. We found out, well, y'all are kind of taking a gander at the budget there. We found out that since we had put it in your agenda packet a few days early, that we can actually change that resolution, it's what Guy had made the motion of earlier tonight, from a temporary budget to the, the proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-four. So that's a, it's fantastic that we can do that. I'll give you all a few minutes to go over there, though.
So I'm assuming we made all of our heads happy?
Yes.
Everybody had what they needed?
It's not always about that, but I think they're all pleased.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, yeah, very, very thankful.
A much more comfortable time when things are going well economically now.
Yes, it is, it is. A lot of hard work went into that, guys, I'll, I'll say. Katie, thank you for everything that you've done too, I excluded you, but we couldn't have done it without her, for sure. Everything was, that, that was brought up, we discussed at length from every department head, and, and I think we're happy with where we're at.
Sometimes more than once.
Sometimes more than once, yes, we, we did discuss it more than once several times.
We can't approve it tonight on one. I'll make motion for the approval of two thousand and twenty-four budget.
Have a motion? Got a second? Katie, since it's a budget, do we need to call role?
Probably so, don't you think?
I would.
Wouldn't hurt. Okay, and Evans made the second.
Evans was the second, yes.
Counselor Oaf.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Roden.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Lacy.
Yes.
Okay, seven to zero.
We've got us a two thousand and twenty-four budget, fantastic. Again, thank you guys that served on that commission, thank, or committee, thank you very much. Moving on to B, or do we want to go ahead and do the resolution now? Let's, let's skip down to D, resolution, and we've changed that word from temporary budget.
Permanent.
To permanent?
You have two budget, or two seventeen.
Right, yeah. And Katie said it was no big deal, I think, isn't that correct, Katie, that you just changed that to reflect permanent?
She actually made two.
I made two.
Oh, you made two, okay, good, good.
We're gonna approve the permanent.
Good option.
Okay.
Move we approve the resolution.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Mr. Ellis. All those in favor, since we took a voice vote on the last go-around, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We've got us a resolution now. Now back to B, this is the ordinance amending Title VI. Now, for those of you in the audience, I want to make this very clear. We passed the, we passed Title VI of the Animal Code last month. And for the discussion that we had up here, which was good, frank, open discussion and dialogue, as far as that goes, the suggestions that you all had made to us, we took those back and looked. And there was a few questions asked by audience members, and Mallory, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention, that whenever we had, excuse me, whenever we had voted to do this the way that it was, and, and the verbiage, after we got to looking at Bryant's ordinance and things of that nature, we have that, that, that you have in yellow there, are y'all to that page yet, I apologize. This is the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash six. And this was as it was approved in our last meeting. Couple of things that we just felt like needed to be brought up was under Section Five, Section Six, point oh four, point oh four, impounding redemption and disposition. In part, in Section B there, says if an animal is impounded, it shall be confined in the city of Huntsville Animal Kennel or approved animal shelter, and shall become property of the city after fifteen days. No other ordinance that we could find stipulated fifteen days.
Yeah, the fifteen days was.
That was.
Applied to a different.
It was applied to a different deal. So we suggest that you replace that to make it sound exactly the way that some of you all had asked me about. that some of you all had asked me about previously. We replace with, if an animal is impounded, it shall be confined in the city of Huntsville Animal Kennel and shall become property of the city after three days, okay, instead of fifteen. After said time, animals may be spayed, neutered, and/or transferred to a city-approved facility. So, what it does is it shortens that timeframe. So, let's say the animal shelter, for example, has an open spot, and we take in an animal at that point in time. We call them and they say, hey, yeah, we've got that, and that's on day four, after we've captured the animal. We don't have to wait for that fifteen-day period. We can immediately take it to the animal shelter at that point in time. We just thought that this verbiage was a little better than what we had, than what we had suggested in our last deal. So, we would be replacing that. The other one that we're replacing is under E, the impounded animal shall be held for a period of at least fifteen days before transferring or humanely euthanized in cases of aggression, untreatable and unmanageable illness or injury, unmanageable behavior issues resulting in the animal being unadoptable. The motion was to change for fifteen days by Counselor Thomas and Counselor Ove. The suggestion that we have for that, to just clean this thing up a little bit, is impounded animals may be humanely euthanized at the discretion of city-controlled personnel in cases such as aggression, untreatable, unmanageable illness or injury, or unmanageable behavior issues after fifteen days. So, that then gives the dog fifteen days. How we were saying that at our last meeting, guys, was a little bit skewed in the fact that we have to wait to do anything after fifteen days, obviously. So, that would be our suggested, that would take the place of E there that you have in the yellow. Now, I'll open up for any discussions that we will have about that.
So, do we need the rest of that sentence after the fifteen days?
After fifteen days, unadoptable, impounded animals may be
They're gonna make, what's gonna happen is that in yellow is gonna replace E.
Yes.
And what's in yellow is gonna replace B.
Exactly.
Got you. So, are we doing that in a whole nother ordinance from six to nine? So, we'll have to do that on emergency reading?
Yes, correct.
Three readings, one nod, just like we usually do.
Mm-hmm, correct.
I make a motion, we put the post-ordinance on its first reading in full.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
That's with amended changes.
Yeah, and do we need to say, guys, that an emergency reading of this, since we did it the last?
It's actually
It's actually on the, okay, all right, good, 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 all right. Sorry, sorry. Go ahead, Jessica.
Okay, we have ordinance number proposed twenty twenty-three-nine, an ordinance amending Title VI of the Animals and Foul Codes of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas. Whereas the city of Huntsville has recently amended the Animal Control Ordinance, the City Council of Huntsville has determined that the code should be further amended to better meet the needs of the city's Animal Control Department. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Huntsville, Article One, Section One, Section Six point oh four point oh four B shall be replaced with the following. B, if the animal is impounded, it shall be confined in the city of Huntsville Animal Kennel and shall become property of the city after three days. After said time, animals may be spayed, neutered, and/or transferred to a city-approved facility. Section Two, Section Six point oh four point oh four E shall be replaced with the following. E, impounded animals may be humanely euthanized at the discretion of city animal control personnel in cases such as aggression, untreatable, unmanageable illness, or injury, or unmanageable behavioral issues. After fifteen days, unadoptable, impounded animals may be humanely euthanized. Article Two, emergency, it is hereby found and determined by the City Council of Huntsville, Arkansas, that there is an immediate need to approve the animal and noisy animal ordinances, as there has been a surge of animals running at large, a change of animal control personnel, and a building of a new kennel. Therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety and welfare shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rule requiring the ordinance in full on three different days be suspended, and that the ordinance be placed on its second reading by title only.
Have a motion, have a second. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Go ahead.
Ordinance number proposed twenty twenty-three-nine, an ordinance amending Title VI of the Animals and Foul Codes of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rule requiring the reading of ordinance on three fifty days be further suspended, that the ordinance be placed on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Roger?
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Eyes have it.
Okay, ordinance number proposed twenty twenty-three-nine, an ordinance amending Title VI of the Animals and Foul Codes of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, any further discussion, my boy.
Mr. Mayor, I move
Do what you wish.
I move we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We've got a motion by Scott, a second by Guy. Let's do a roll call.
Counselor Ove?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ellis? Ford?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay, we have an amended new ordinance, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the emergency clause.
Second.
Have a motion, got a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Eyes have it. All right. City Ward redistricting. Wes, if you would, we'll put that up there for our constituents to view that map. Obviously, with the growth that we've experienced, you know, one of the things that we've done is reached out to North Arkansas Regional Planning, and they have helped us out tremendously with this. Actually, back up and say, Sean Davis has helped us out tremendously with this. He has access to all the water accounts in town, and we could actually put a face with a figure, if you will. So, Sean, thank you for all the help that you, that we've enlisted you to do with this thing. But, one of the things that you have to worry about with the growth that we've experienced, which was to the tune, over a two-year period of time, about twenty-six percent growth, one of the things that you have to worry about is we're allowed at the state level to have a variance of ten percent or less within our ward districts. Obviously, and if you'll, if you'll look at that, or actually, let me pass these out. This is our current situation. This is our current situation that we don't have a map up there with, and then we'll talk about it here a little bit. This is the current Huntsville wards, as of right now, by twenty twenty census, or well, actually, of our new census that we took just this year. Ward one had eight hundred and twenty-three souls in it, Ward two had seven hundred and ninety-four, Ward three had twelve hundred and seventeen people in it, and Ward four, this is the current adopted wards that we're at, and Ward four has eight hundred and twenty-nine. As you can see there in the map that I just gave you, Ward three greatly has increased, and obviously, that's where all of our growth area is currently taking place. In this, they actually offered us two alternative redistricting plans, and I'm gonna read this to you in its entirety. The two alternative redistricting plans have been prepared for review and consideration. Each would equalize population among wards to an acceptable level, with the population deviation for Plan One being only one point seven percent deviation, and Plan Two being three point nine percent deviation, which falls under the ten percent threshold that the state allows for. Under Plan One, current council members would remain in their respective wards, which is relevant and proper redistricting consideration. However, that would not be the case under Plan Two, which would likely be problematic with regards to continuity on the city council. Thus, Plan One is the best plan in our opinion. Please note that redistricting criteria and principles approved by the courts were employed in the development of these two plans. A summary of those principles and criteria are attached, as is a summary of the applicable state statute and a suggested ordinance to adopt a ward redistricting plan. So, basically, guys, when we are so out of kilter, we're actually forty-six percent. The acceptable threshold is ten percent, and we are at forty-six percent now with Ward Three being as grown as much as it has. So, what you see there, and those of you in the audience, what you see there is Plan One. Plan One, because we have been able to contain all of our city council members within those wards, which is some of the criteria that the state puts forth that we must try to do, right? And Plan One gets us down to a one point seven percent threshold, which falls well under the state guideline. So, what you see from your sheet that I just gave you, the current situation, to now, you can kind of see how those wards change off a little bit. Huntsville's population has increased seven hundred and eighty-four people since the census was conducted from twenty-eight hundred and seventy-nine people to thirty-six hundred and sixty-three people. That's a huge increase per capita. That means the news is out. We love you, come on in, I guess. So, that's kind of where we're at, which we are tickled to death that we're getting the growth that we are. It helps to disperse the tax base a little bit, and growth is good. It helps us, each one of us, pay those new water and sewer rates. It helps each one of us with the taxes that we pay whenever we go to Harps or Walmart. So, it's, growth is obviously good, and we can sustain it right now. So, I've said just about everything. I include that in your packet for y'all to do your dead-level best to educate yourselves on what we've been dealing with, and got a letter here, Wes, if you'll put that up, the letter from, with the green top, Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission, that says, or do you have it? You may not have it, that shows the validity of the audit that we done, the validity of what we're trying to accomplish, and the validity of us trying to be fair and equitable across the boards, across the board in regards to the redistricting. So, I'll, after I've said all that, I'll open it up for discussion for many of you all right now.
It don't look like any just major change with the H's to
Well, like you said, it's happened. Looks like a lot of it changed between two, four, and three.
Right.
Just a little.
Um.
Which one took a pretty good couple, two.
We got three. The thing I look at the biggest is in Ward Three, it's a heck of a lot more, it's a heck of a lot more fair now than what it was in the past. We've got twelve hundred and seventeen people that live in that ward right now. And for the audience, this Ward Plan One will take, the Ward, Ward One will go to nine hundred and twenty-four people, Ward Two, nine hundred and sixteen people, Ward Three, nine hundred and eight people, and Ward Four, nine hundred and fifteen people, as you can see down there in the legend there at the corner of the map.
So, does Ward Four have half of Elizabeth, or whole Elizabeth?
Yes.
So, that splits the road?
It's gonna split the road, left side versus right. Well, actually, Elizabeth, I'm thinking college, hang on.
Escort does the same thing. I mean, we got a lot of them that does.
We got a lot of them that actually do that.
That's the same, yeah. I'll make motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four-one on its first reading, second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Well, we're gonna, we're gonna go with Plan One if their suggestion, and after analyzing it, I'm saying that Ward One, if we go with Ward Two, or Ward Two.
I'm just saying, we need to distinguish.
Yeah, and if we ended up going with Plan Two, we're gonna have to have, and this is gonna cost the city quite a bit of money to have special elections and all that good stuff, so. Plan One is, we're going with Plan One, so, you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve Plan One.
All right. Got a motion, got a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Go ahead.
We have ordinance number proposed twenty twenty-four-one, an ordinance restricting, redistricting city wards. Whereas cities have an obligation and responsibility to ensure that wards are substantially equal population, and whereas an analysis of each city ward has been conducted and a recommendation made that redistricting be undertaken. And whereas Arkansas law vests that city councils with enforcement and redistricting authority, and whereas it is the desire of the city council that a new ward boundary is be established. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas, Section One, the Ward Redistricting Plan, consisting of the map attached heretofore, is hereby approved for future filing and election purposes, and shall be the official ward map for the city of Huntsville for all purposes. Section Two, all ward maps and descriptions in effect prior to the adoption of this ordinance are repealed. Section Three, a certified copy of said map shall be submitted to the Madison County Election Commission and filed in the office of the Madison County Clerk.
Okay, thank you. And I will get clarification where these ward lines are for you guys, so we'll know kind of where they're separated.
I guess my other concern is, too, is is this gonna coincide with the election for this year? Are they gonna be able to have enough time?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because that's not until November.
Yeah, they have to get ready for it.
This will be approved by, this will be approved by February.
And we will, we will sit down with them.
I just, looking at the map here, it looks like Elizabeth is all in the orange. I think Janay, if you look under the term, the Elizabeth name there, that street looks to be all in orange.
Mm-hmm, right.
All these streets in Elizabeth, so it looks like it'd be separated between Janay and Elizabeth on that.
Yeah, on May, if you look down there in May, and I'll get some clarification from Northern Regional Planning. I'll get some clarification from them, exactly where these boundaries are, because what we want to be is very specific and precise whenever we sit down with Austin up at the courthouse and get this all figured out.
I think they provide them with
Yes, I do, too. I think that they will. But, clarification for our end of it for certain, you know, that way if somebody comes in and says, hey, you know, where I, which I think that they'll
And I think they give us individual maps for each one, so you can really zoom in and see.
Yeah. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll move on to amended item E, and that is the real estate purchase and sale contract for the Charles E. Coger and Lois Jean Coger Trust, Coger Revocable Trust. This is, if y'all remember, we had had a conversation earlier on about the purchase of two acres of land in which Mr. Coger was gonna donate another two point two zero acres of land, for a total of four point two zero acres of land, in the total amount of two hundred thousand dollars, of which we are going to recapture that money from the Airport Commission as we build hangers up there. So, for example, the first hanger that we build, it'll generate about twelve hundred dollars worth of net-net to the city. The second hanger, twenty-four hundred, third hanger, thirty-six hundred, and on up to forty-eight hundred, once we get everything established that we need to get established. So, that two hundred thousand dollars will be paid back by the Airport Commission. Now, since then, I have to disclose, because I think it's pertinent to the conversation, that we've had a meeting with John Coger and Lois Jean and Charles, and there was a few things on the original contract that they, they asked us to change, of which, one of the things was, they asked us to separate the land, instead of four point two total acres. They wanted to show, like, under the property, under Exhibit A there, A dash I, parcel one, parcel one is going to be the two acres that were, the existing lots there that we're purchasing. Parcel two is the donation of the two point two acres, and since then, we have added in the additional two point seven acres for Mitchison Park, directly across from Mitchison Park, the flat land across from Mitchison Park, for future parking lots or what have you, whatever we decide to put up there. And it seemed to be the consensus of council that we wanted to Um, and it seemed to be the consensus of council that, that we wanted to approach them to figure out exactly where we were at or what, what, what they expected of us. In that, we have been able to remain, as far as the negotiations go, we've been able to remain. Uh, Mr. Coger wants us to pay him back over a two-year period of time, uh, on both parcels of land. So that would be a total of almost seven acres, is that correct? I didn't do six point nine, yeah, six point nine acres. Um, he wants us to pay him over a two-year period, uh, beginning January, uh, thirty-first. Um, when we had that at June, that was one of the things that we changed. Uh, he wanted to get paid at the first of every year instead of in the middle of the year. Um, understandable on his part completely. Um, and that was for a hundred thousand dollars that will be paid, uh, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And then another hundred thousand will be paid in Jan- on January the tenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, then as you noticed there for the purchase price, it's a total of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those six point nine acres of land. Uh, and, and we have, we have it explicit in here under the, on, under one B. For parcel two, the seller agrees to donate parcel two to the purchaser. Uh, and then for parcel C, or I'm sorry, for, uh, one C, for parcel three, the first installment of seventy-five thousand shall be paid by April the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I wanted to separate those just for financial reasons for us. Um, and, and the contracts there in its entirety, and I'm gonna give you all about five minutes to kind of peruse over that contract. The, the middle part of it is normal lawyer jargon in regards to contracts. The first and the, sorry, Jessica.
Clear.
Uh, the, the first page is what you need to exclusively look at along with the last page there, uh, or the last few pages there. So, uh, but you, you're, you're more than welcome to read it, uh, over, but this is kind of where we're at. It seemed as though the council wanted, wanted the two point seven acres as bad as we wanted. Obviously, we're not gonna get paid back on the two point seven acres. That's, that's just gonna be money that we have to apply to it. Uh, but the two hundred thousand, the biggest chunk of that, uh, we can get put back in our coffers over a period of time. So the other good news about this is, is Charles has graciously, uh, Charles and John have graciously, um, said that, you know, in the negotiation process, that there will be no interest charged on the two-year period of time. Uh, so the hundred and seventy-five that we pay the first year, no interest charged on that. Um, and then I've talked to a few of you all, I haven't been able to verbalize it with, with some of you. Krista, you're brand new, so, uh, one of the other things that this ordinance is gonna say is it's gonna allow me to go out, if you all approve yet, to go out and obtain the right type of financing for the city of Huntsville, best potential terms that we possibly can. And, uh, one of the things that I will say that we're looking at doing potentially, uh, that we've got no backlash, we've still got, uh, a, a few people to ask at AML, um, is, and nobody's really heard of it that way. I can't believe that we haven't done this before, but one of the things that we may do is tie up, uh, for a period of five years or whatever we so see fit, that's a financial decision, so it's really gonna ultimately be up to you all. We may tie up our, our CD that we have in the bank, uh, to get the lowest possible interest that we possibly can. Yeah, be, be the collateral on what we're looking at. Um, the only other thing I was gonna say is, is this would be a, what, what I anticipate it to be is a line of credit, which is something that we can utilize year after year after it's paid down. So it adds, uh, potentially, and, and we can have a discussion about that. Obviously, three hundred and fifty thousand is all we need. Uh, we could potentially borrow four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, whatever you so see fit. And I want, and the reason I say that is I want you all to keep in mind, knock on wood, and cross your fingers and pray every day, that we get our other grant this, this month for the, for the, uh, five hundred and seventy thousand dollar upgrade to our park down here. That would come in, uh, it would, we correspond with that swimmingly. So, um, just be thinking of that, uh, just food for thought as far as finances go. Uh, and obviously, once we start with the finance, and I'll bring all that back to y'all's attention, and y'all can help me figure out what the best direction is, you think, for the city at that point in time. So take a few minutes, read over that, uh, if there's anything in there. Uh, we've finally, finally, finally today got this finally nailed down to what it needs to be, so.
So Jessica's looked at this, right?
Yes.
Jessica created that. This is kind of a unique situation, to be honest with you, Leslie, because there was, there was quite a bit, to be honest with everybody. There was quite a bit of back and forth, a little bit of bickering, but a lot of back and forth. Hey, we'd like it this way, we'd like it that way. And this is, this is the culmination of, I think, a good position for the city of Huntsville. So along with the Coger family.
Well, for wanting that first payment, we're talking about forty-five days. So I feel like we need to do something fairly quick on getting there.
Oh, yeah, that's why we prepared a resolution, because if, if not, we're gonna go back and say, not gonna happen. It's gonna be February sometime before we do this, so.
Just, just so you know, Roger, and you guys weren't in the budget stuff, but it was also built in.
It, it's not necessarily built in, but it's accounted for with the budget.
It's, it's not in that bottom line number, but, yeah.
Yeah.
But you can clearly see where we're at, so, yeah.
It has, it has been accounted for.
Yeah.
Is there any questions of me in the, everything that y'all have read or? Hopefully, I did a good enough job of explaining to you out there in the audience.
Travis, I think for clarification purposes, because most of us went in on those talks.
Right.
What's the big difference from what we discussed at last meeting versus the contract?
Well, you know, Stephen Ford had, our Councilman Ford had asked us to, and I really liked that idea in our last talk. That was one big, big caveat that had changed was, Stephen mentioned, hey, he'd make a motion to go ahead and approve it. And I say we go ahead and buy the, buy the land, or, or the two point seven acres that is, and maybe see if they can, and one of the things that he wanted me to bring to the table was finance that over three years. So we're at fifty thousand dollars a year on that. And I really liked that. And at first, I thought that that's what we were gonna get, uh, and, and still think that, uh, that's what we should've got. But that's not what happened. And, uh, to do the finality of the thing, that was one of the biggest things that had changed was, uh, to relent on the three-year form of payback versus a two-year form of payback. And credit to Mr. Coger, I completely understand on this business deal. If I'm sitting in his shoes, uh, I would, uh, I would certainly wanna get paid back as quickly as I possibly could to. Um, he's had the opportunity to sell the land up at the airport for a hundred and fifty thousand an acre. So, and, and we know that, because we've actually talked to, to one of the persons that bought three, a, a three-acre parcel from him up there. Uh, this is the last bastion of, of real estate right next to our airport. The thing that we, once we do this, the thing that we've got to do is we've gotta change the dynamic and the mindset, because that could potentially be something that is very sustainable. Another thing that we've talked about doing, and I visited with Mr. Coger today about that, is, uh, reducing, uh, maybe the number of people on the commission and having a manager at some point in time. Once we get to that, it's not gonna happen overnight. Um, there's just a lot of things that go along with this that I think that we can change the dynamic and the way that people think about our airport being a place, well, you have to own an airplane to go up there. No, you don't have to own an airplane. This could be great for commerce. Uh, now, where we're gonna get into it is whenever we get down to what the, uh, the Airport Commission and, and at the state level is, are we sure that hangars is, is what we wanna do? Obviously, to get our money back, sure, maybe one or two hangars, absolutely. But I think there's gonna be a stock gap that we have there, uh, in between maybe year one and year two that we ask for three hundred thousand dollars in grant money for, um, for building up the pads and doing things of that nature. There may be some other things, and I think it would be imperative for us, if you all decide to go this way, I think it's imperative that we have maybe a special meeting, it didn't have to be this year by no means, but maybe January, February. Let's go up there and collectively discuss, invite the public, whatever we wanna do. Let's go up there and collectively discuss what we wanna do. Y'all need to lay eyes on what we're buying anyway. And with the airport, that's just one, one faction of this. The other thing is, is we've had some really good ideas with this group, uh, in regards to the, the, the parking area across from Mitchison Park. That's land that, that's land that we really need. Now, I'm with Katie a little bit, and it's aggravating that we're giving that much for it. But at the same time, that's according to appraised values and, and what has recently sold, that's about the going rate, guys. And it's unfortunate, that's just the world that we live in right now. But I'm satisfied that we can, we can do something for our citizens on that hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of property there and would be better for everybody, honestly. So I'm all about that. And I'm, I'm, I kind of, and I use, not use, but I, I kind of agree with, uh, Mr. Ford. Uh, this is the piece of property that, that I'm, I'm the most interested in, because the other's gonna be a wash eventually. Uh, a wash eventually, I said wash, I think. A wash eventually. Um, but at the same time, you asking me as mayor, I think it's a good financial decision for us. I think that it's, um, especially with the, the ability for them to pay it back. And I think it changes the dynamic and it takes us into a new era in the fact that we've always, it's kind of always been separated. We've had airport doing their thing and the city doing theirs. Well, now, with this, we're kind of putting our money where our mouth is, and, and so will the airport. And we can, we can, uh, help utilize the change for, um, better reasons than what we've had in the past. So my thought. Of course, I don't get a vote, but it's my thought. I hope not. Has everybody had a chance while I've moved on here to look over that?
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, we need to vote, vote on the resolution, correct?
Yes, that's what we're voting on, is the resolution.
Okay, I'm looking at, uh, adopt resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty-three.
We got a motion, we got a second by Mr. Ford. Katie, would you call a roll on that, please, since this is a big decision for our city?
Counselor Oof?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Okay, seven to zero.
All right. Thank you all. So Jessica, would you, you and I'll get together sometime tomorrow and we'll get that over for the signatures that they need.
We can do it.
Yep, okay. All right. Get back over here to where we were. I've lost the sheet, Barry. Too many things, thank you. Yours was better, yours was better. All right. That takes care of new business. Oh, sorry, sorry, guys, forgot all about that. You, I did need it. Thank you, Crystal, yeah. All right, uh, par. F? F, yeah. Uh, discuss, um, the appointments of our, our commissions or suggestions of commissioners.
Well, uh, being on the waterboard, I'll make a motion that we accept some of those years as, uh, a reappointment back from which the committee, uh, has recommended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, before we take a vote on that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you all too that, uh, and this has been just a little bit of housekeeping that we're trying to catch, catch up with. Um, gosh, Katie, when was it on the, on the Parks Commission, McKenzie? How long ago is that, March?
It was the night I missed council. Was it May, was it the?
May.
When I was sick, because I was sick the following day and I was parking.
We had, we had taken it by their suggestion that McKenzie, um, Elsie, uh, was gonna serve in a vacancy on the Parks Commission. The other day, we also, uh, I had made the suggestion, and they all unanimously agreed, uh, that Janice Smith, uh, was gonna take, uh, the part of her late husband on the, on the Park Commission, Don Smith, who served us very well on that Park Commission. And, uh, she had, uh, she, she was very touched that we'd done that, and so they confirmed her the other day. Um, so that's gonna be the two others that we need to go ahead and vote on, get, get a unanimous decision from you all to say that that's okay or no, or we can open it up for discussion if we want to.
And my motion to include all three of those appointments.
Okay. So we got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. So now we can swear those people in.
Before you move on, I just wanna say one thing about the Bashing Building. I've heard nothing but good comments.
Oh.
Last week about the efforts and the work that's went on over there, so kudos to the people that are doing that.
Absolutely.
I've been really amazed not to hear anybody.
Not a peep of the negativity, I'm all positive. Looking at the cars.
The, the good news about it is, I called Jason the other day, because he's the one that facilitate all those cars that are in there. And I said, Jason, you're, you're the one that created the monster, because the night of the parade, I go down and visit with some people, and they're like, Travis, we'd love to have our car in there. Okay, let's get ahold of Jason. And so we went from two to four overnight, so. Good job, Jay.
You gonna rotate? Nothing but positive, though. I've had, I've heard nothing negative, it's all been positive comments. Good job.
Okay, anything else come before council tonight? Hearing none. Uh, announcements, um, Economic Development Commission meeting Tuesday, November the fifteenth at eight-thirty AM. Water and Sewer Commission meeting Thursday, November the sixth, whoop, I'm looking at the wrong one. My apologies, let me back up. Announcements now, uh, Economic Development Commission meeting Tuesday, December the nineteenth at eight-thirty. Um, Water and Sewer Commission meeting, uh, Thursday, December the twenty-first at twelve PM. Planning Commission meeting Monday, December the eighteenth at six o'clock PM. And of course, our next city council meeting will be in our brand-new year, January the eighth at six o'clock PM. No.
It's five-thirty, not six o'clock.
Oh, five-thirty.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
That was me.
Katie. I, I took a lot for the team tonight, so. All right, five-thirty PM. Planning Commission meeting Monday, December eighteenth at five-thirty PM. My apologies. Okay, nothing else come before council? Oh.
On the other part.
Back up before we adjourn, uh, Steve and I'm the one that brought it up. I, I am so sorry. Let's back up to the budget. Guys, I hate to do that, but we, we've really gotta have a discussion about this. One of the things that come out of our budget meeting, um, is there's, a lot of places do this, and, and, and one of the suggestions that I bring before you tonight is, uh, to change things up a little bit for twenty twenty-four is we pay a little bit for commission meetings, committee meetings, things of that nature. And a lot of times, we have people that work, they can't show up or whatever, we completely understand that. But one of the discussions that we wanna have is no show, no pay. Um, that was brought up, and that's something that we need to discuss tonight. So I opened it up, uh, to the floor on discussion on no show, no pay as far as the budgetary items go. No, I'm sorry, as far as meetings go.
That would include all meetings?
That would include all meetings, yeah. And the thing that, that we have talked about, because I think, Katie, do we have it in our deal that says, hey, if you miss so many meetings, you?
That I don't know.
Maybe it's, is that the Water Department?
Yeah, I think it's certain.
You do in your bylaws?
Yes.
Water Department, do you all have something in your bylaws for your commission?
Attendance.
About attendance?
I don't think we do.
No, but that's a conversation we've been having.
I think commission, we've discussed it.
Okay, and I knew you all had discussed it.
It's a matter, everybody should get on the same page.
Absolutely, yeah. So, open it up.
I, I would think that it's important enough that if you're on a commission to serve, first off. So if you can't serve, then let somebody else take your place. So I would, I would be for that. I don't, I don't have a problem with, uh, with, uh, if you don't show up.
But I do believe that's a true emergency, I mean.
I think that's different. Absolutely. Yeah, that's different.
How you're gonna decide.
Have a grace period.
True emergency or non, or. For emergency or non, or I have one you can miss a year or one you can miss as your appointment or. Because if it's truly, I mean, which of course, I mean, the pay, there ain't enough paid.
No, there's not.
I don't think anybody would be disappointed not getting paid if they missed either. I mean, if you have.
Sure. But sometimes you can look at like committee meetings and stuff and things like that, and there will, it'll be, it'll be somewhat empty. I mean, there's some times where you may not be able to conduct and do business with, because you don't comfortable with all the people.
And the other thing I'll bring up in, in, in the, in our budget meeting, and that was just something that was brought to the table. But the other thing is, is in no way, shape or form, I mean, we understand work and we understand not being in town. And we understand things of that nature. These are just those things that I think that we're talking about is, uh, for example, and tell me if I'm wrong about this, Steve, but. The planning commission, they have an ad hoc meeting every week. Now, I get it, there's, there's some of them that are on the ad hoc committee. Uh, there's those that you know will be there, and there's those that we know that are not. Um.
Well, it's, it's open for all.
It's open for all, yeah.
Most free time actually show up and.
Yes.
So everybody that shows up for that gets some sort of.
Yes.
They don't, it's not a blanket.
Yeah.
You've got to tend to, and, and we also agreed that if we didn't have any business, even though we showed up, if there was no business, you don't get paid. We stay there for thirty minutes to an hour discussing our work in front of us, you know, the clock is ticking.
But it is just for show.
Just the ones that show up or participate.
Yeah.
So is that already totally budgeted for ever, or does that come out of?
Yes, it's already totally.
It's already budgeted.
It's budgeted in case everyone shows up for every meeting.
That just goes back in the general fund if they don't?
Yeah, it would just not, not be fully used. Like the, the committee gets, there's a committee pay separate from your commission, true commission meetings. Um, they pay thirty-five and I think those are fifteen, right?
It's not a lot of money, but I, I tend to agree that.
Maybe we could just send that back into the Christmas life fund.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, but, but I do, I do agree, you know, I mean, we want everybody to be on the same page, especially on these committees and commissions. We want them all to attend, uh, and, and be there. And obviously, we understand things come up or arise, uh, and you can't make it. You just don't get paid for it. So.
That, that has always been our policy on the commission meetings. They get, I, I was under the impression we were talking about council at the, it was, I'm misunderstanding.
All meetings.
Well, I mean, it's, that has already been the case with commission and committee meetings. They only get paid per attendance, period.
Okay, then we're going to reiterate that right now within this conversation and say.
I know there was some discussion about phone, over the phone too, if they attend the phone.
What's y'all's take on that? We, we discussed this at our budget meeting.
I mean, there, there are, there are times when people have to be out of town. I mean, that's just the.
But so are you all, are you all comfortable if they decide to call in by phone?
I think they do it at the courthouse for the JPs.
They do.
I would say yes, definitely. We count attendance both by Zoom or phone if someone can join.
Okay.
For the whole meeting.
Should be for a whole meeting.
Yes.
Have to attend the whole meeting, absolutely. Yeah.
No, I, I think that's fair.
Okay.
I got a question, Brandy.
Yes.
On y'all's bylaws on the economic development, is there a timeframe how many meetings?
Yes.
Person can miss?
Yes.
What's that?
And it's three.
Three in a year?
Mm-hmm.
I think we should adopt that. We, we need a number.
Okay.
I can share that with you.
Okay.
Well, if we're just doing twelve, that's a quarter.
Now, are you saying that those are consecutive or is that?
I don't think it says.
Just three total?
I don't think it says.
So three meetings through.
Three meetings for the year.
And it is at the discretion of the chair to talk, to talk to them. So we have a little.
Well, it puts a little more skin in the game in the fact that, for example, on planning commission, Steve's the chair of that right now. Obviously, they're fixing to have, uh, uh, you know, they're going to have their election or whatever. But, you know, if, if I was serving on the planning commission, it engages me to call Steve and say, hey, look, I'm not going to make it tonight because of this, this and this. Accountability, it brings accountability back to me to, to at least take the initiative to call and say, hey, I'm not going to make it because of. You know, what, what I have going on, or hey, I had a kid sick, or hey, I had this happen or whatever. So.
So my next question, if you say if you go with three and they get paid for the first two. It's just after three there will be, I mean, because they're already going to be paid. I mean, is that paid at the end of the year?
Yes.
Yeah, most, most of your committees are.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I, I just, we just have a spreadsheet. And so each commission has each month and we total it up and then so they all receive a check.
Well, I would say, I mean, if that's what they're, we need to vote on that. I'll second.
Any, any further discussion about that?
Is that?
Good call because I forgot to bring it up. That's my bad. I forgot to bring it up. So.
Just to clarify is that all commissions are just plan, I mean, because.
I, I think, I think you need to make it all.
All.
Yeah, I leave citywide.
Yeah.
It's got one, one process.
Yeah, I mean, that way everybody's on the same.
I don't want to open up the can of worms, but we may only have three meetings a year for the park commission.
Well, but those are planned meetings.
You don't have to have one every month.
Right.
That's, that shouldn't reflect in there.
Yeah, I don't think.
Percentage rather than just a flat number.
Yeah, like one of those meetings.
You know, another thing to talk about in Brandy product back this, that, let's say, yeah, we're adopting three misses. But those three misses need to be evaluated what it was. You know, it could be really an emergency crisis. It wouldn't be a choice, I just didn't want to show up or I wouldn't feel good, I was on vacation. That stuff happens. But when you have really a legitimate reason why you couldn't be there and you're a very active member, it should be counted against you. That way, the commission itself and that department will evaluate that. If you miss three or miss four. Hey, we're, we're going to discuss the reasons you missed and either support the cause or, you know, you don't have a good cause.
Oh, I, I agree. I think the chairperson of those.
Commission should be able to.
And I think even, you know, just kind of boil it down to its common form. I mean, this is democracy. If, if your commission so sees fit, you can, you, as a chair, you could ask to vote. Hey, look, you know, John Doe has missed three meetings. But two of those meetings were missed because of this. Maybe throw those disclaimers out there and just take a vote by the commission. Okay, so do we need to?
Need to vote on it.
Yeah, we, we need to adopt them. You made the first motion. Do you want to amend it to say everything that we've talked about or?
Sure.
Okay.
Make the motion, we, what we've agreed on about the missing the three days and that could be discussed, and then, uh, no show, no pay.
Now, is this something, well, I'm, first off, I'm going to second that motion. So now we're in the discussion mode.
Right.
Is that something that we would have to go into like a personnel deal? Do we actually make that a policy?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd probably make it a policy on it.
So I, I think, I think after tonight, we just move forward and draft something and.
I would draft, yeah, probably a res.
Policy by the city.
All right. So we have a motion to adopt this new policy, everything that was discussed, and actually put it into motion with a ordinance, resolution?
I think we could probably do that with a resolution.
Okay, do with a resolution and we'll amend our policy.
And, and I would also make recommendation that you give that to all of your commission. Chairpersons.
Yeah.
So there's part of their official.
You want to add in there about a phone call if you're attending the entire.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get down the weeds about that just a little bit because I think, I mean, there's a lot of.
Modern age.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if you, if you don't have a quorum and you need to vote on something pretty.
Absolutely.
Pretty important, uh, one of them's available and you can utilize that.
Yeah, a lot of Zoom meetings and, uh, and they count our attendance on those Zoom meetings just like they do anything else. So.
I live into that, so.
So, yeah, I think we'll be explicit whenever we detail that. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the ayes have it. That's what we'll work on for January. Um, now a motion to adjourn. My apologies for keeping you all fifteen, twenty minutes later. Everybody go home.
I'm going to get one in there.